Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Yes, thanks.
Hi, Keith.
Hello. Hello. How is everyone?
Good.
Good. I'm sure that everyone is good and safe and enjoying this beautiful day. Welcome this afternoon to our board work session. There are a few people that are running a little bit late this afternoon. Mr. Fletcher had a personal development would be joining us later. As I scroll through, I'm seeing everyone. We've got enough to get started. So we are starting off this afternoon with another look at the budget, Super Junior's budget. So we're starting out with our budget work session. That being said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Neder and the team of Martin Winter and Terry Kimsey to kick us off and get started.
Okay. Thank you and good afternoon, everyone. I'll pull up a PowerPoint we'd like to review briefly with you. And so this is what we'd like to cover relatively quickly this afternoon. But the board had requested to review all of the new locally funded positions included within the proposed budget. So we've got that for you. The board also requested some additional specificity as it relates to our unplanned COVID-19 related savings and expenditures. And we're going to give you an update on the Federal Cares Act funding and recent state legislation associated with that just over the weekend. Then we'll be available to answer any additional questions or board inquiries about it. And then we'll turn it over to the board for discussion and we hope preparation to adopt a proposed board budget. So on this screen, you will see a list of all new locally funded positions that are included within the board's proposed budget. I'm not going to read each line. I'll give you a summary. It does include in this list a reference to the page number towards the right in the budget book, the business case page number, and also whether it is formula driven or not. So as you look at this list, the vast majority, all but a handful of these positions are formula driven and are school-based. There are a few, a handful of exceptions. But I'll let you look at that list and when we get through the presentation, we'll be glad to take any questions about it. Next, we've got some additional detail about the estimated unplanned savings. And again, these are estimates at this point. They will change, but a big one is substitute pay in our estimated savings from mid-March through the end of the year, June 30th, be a savings of $4 million. The next major category are service contracts. Eight and a quarter million dollars are estimated savings. The majority of those service contracts lie in two areas. The first being transportation and the second being academics. Third, we've got estimated utility savings at $1.6 million. Next, we've got estimated professional development workshop travel and related savings of $4.1 million. And then the last major category we've got here are is fuel. And that is estimated based on the mileage we had been driving and our fuel price that we've got currently in inventory of 1.5 million. I believe I mentioned last week at your work session, I want to mention it again today. That's not true savings and funding. We have that fuel inventory. We pre-purchased it at a low price on the market at the time. And so it's not going to become available as true funding. But what it does mean is we'll have that still in inventory and we'll defer the need to purchase fuel in the coming year. So it's a different type of savings, if you will. And then the last category, and we really at this point have no good way to estimate it. There will be other savings from the expenditure restrictions that we did put in a couple of weeks ago. And I reviewed with you at your board work session last week. Okay. Next, we've got estimated unplanned expenses. And these again are estimated at this point in the major categories. The acquisition of student devices, hotspot devices, as well as service, 16.1 million. Instructional materials, production and distribution, $215,000. Nursing supplies and PPE materials, $60,000. Lost revenue and refunds, $1 million. And these are lost revenues and refunds in the community use area and refunds related to parking fees and before and after care fees. The next item, we originally, when we had this put together for the board last week, had this next category on the unplanned savings list. But when we did a close look at it, we are actually spending more now on transportation maintenance based upon two things. You'll recall that we have had a high vacancy rate, 25% or greater in our mechanics in the transportation department. As a result of our buses, with the exception of those involved with the food distribution effort, now not running on a daily basis. We're not adding to our repair list. We also have access to all buses except for those doing food distribution. We're actually making headway on our repairs and so we're actually spending a little bit more. So those are unplanned expenses. In the scheme of things, not significant. And perhaps if there's a blessing in this, it's allowing us to get caught up on a backlog of maintenance issues. And then beyond that, there will be upcoming unplanned expenditures through the remainder of the year in summer. And at this point, we do not have a way to estimate those. Next, I want to focus on again unplanned expenses and revenue reductions. And this is just in the area of child nutrition. They've incurred approximately $3.2 million of costs beyond food costs, beyond labor costs to set up this distribution effort. And then in addition, we estimate that from mid-March through the end of the school year, they will basically have a net effective revenue loss of $10 million. And then I have on here unplanned, or excuse me, cost of summer food distribution without receipts revenue, question mark. Although we believe based upon what we know now, we may have support in that effort from the federal funding passing through the state. So I'd like to next run through what the state and federal government has done. Some of this we covered, but we've got more detail for you this week. At their April 30th meeting, the State Board of Education did extend the Emergency Leave Act through May, that should be 31st. I apologize for all staff. We still don't know what we will have after May 31st. So we'll have to watch and wait closely, watch closely and wait. The state, using state funding, did distribute $50 million. And this money, the source of it came from summer reading camp funds, statewide carry forward reserve, and state emergency relief and disaster reserves. We spoke about that early on through this. We did receive 3.8 million of that. That 3.8 million, we have used to cover paying staff and child nutrition. Our estimates are that funding will allow us to cover those staff from mid-March through the end of April. And then moving on to the Federal Cares Act. $150 billion nationwide of relief funds for state and local governments has been approved. And to put that in perspective, roughly three times the amount of American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds that were received in the Great Recession. And these funds are all flowing from the government into the states and it's up to the states to distribute them.
Mr. Neder, can I get you to hold one second?
Yes.
I saw a hand. Ms. Cash, did you have a question regarding savings or some other?
Yeah, I have a question about estimated unplanned expenses. Can you explain to me the $60,000 for PPE and nursing supplies that since we gave considerable amount of that to the county health department when we had extra? Is that going to be reimbursed from them to us through our line items?
Ms. Cash, I'm going to turn that either over to Paul Coe if I could, or Edward McFarland to provide some better information on that.
Excuse me while I unmute myself. Ms. Cash, could you say your question one more time? I'm sorry.
We, I think we donated a lot of our PPE to the Wake County Health Department. And I don't know how we did that through our financial line item distribution. The $60,000 that we are incurring as a loss, I want to know what that, what can we get back from the county as far as that? As far as what we've given to them, I don't, I'm not thinking we should have a loss or if we do, we should get it reimbursed.
Yeah, so those costs were related to additional PPE equipment that we wanted to purchase for mainly our CNS staff, but also our bus drivers and any additional school system members that may have a need. Because we were worried about the shortage in supply because we did collect what we had from our schools to have ready for our county partners. But I think because as that was happening, this was also happening, we wanted to make sure we had all the PPE that we could provide for our staff. So that's what that money was for.
Oh, okay. So when, once we realized we had more than we needed and we transferred some of it to the health department, did we get a line item budget back to us?
I think I would have to follow up to find out more about that.
Okay, I would appreciate that. We should be reimbursed on that. Thank you.
Is it not likely that we gave things like cleaning solutions and maybe gloves? But we would not have had masks and we would have needed to buy masks for our transportation, nutrition, and technology services?
No, we had masks. We had masks as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so in terms of, go ahead.
Paul, were these masks reusable, some of the PPE things that you ordered, were they re-washable?
No, so the masks that we had, I believe were not. They were disposable masks. So when we were trying to plan out how many face coverings that were reusable for our staff that we would need, those face coverings that are reusable were part of what we purchased. In addition to finding thermometers, thermometer covers, alcohol swabs to clean the thermometers, in addition to accruing any gloves, gloves and any other PPE that we could find.
Okay. Thank you very much, Paul, for checking into that because I do know that Matt Calabria has said they received a lot from us. And I appreciate that. Maybe we can do some exchange financing there.
Yeah, I do think, I'll just weigh in very quickly, Ms. Cash. I think there is certainly space to understand what we had to reorder that was part of what we contributed and what we ordered that was not part of our stock that we needed based on the operations and then square up as needed with the county.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Neder, I don't see any other hands, so please continue.
Okay. So again, to the Federal Cares Act, I think this is where we were. To give a sense of the extent of it, it's roughly three times the RFA funds that were released during the Great Recession. Just this weekend, the General Assembly acted. Two bills were passed, House Bill 1043 and Senate Bill 704. 1043 speaks directly to funding, 704 speaks primarily to policy. I'm going to be speaking about 1043, I believe Dr. McFarland. Later in this presentation, when we do a COVID-19 update, we'll be bringing up many of the things that are included within Senate Bill 704. But the Federal Cares Act and the action taken by the legislature means they have now, the state have appropriated 2.7 billion of the 3.5 billion of CARES funding received by the state for immediate use and also for reserve. And specifically for K-12, that includes just under $360 million for the elementary and secondary emergency relief fund component. When we reviewed that number with you last week, it was higher. I think it was closer to 390. It includes 95.6 million for the Governor's Emergency Educational Leave Fund Component. And it includes $231.6 million for specified educational purposes. So this is the first one. We shared this with you last week. And even though the overall award as a state is a little bit less, Wake County is still estimated to receive 24.4 million. And that's a fixed number now at this point. It's not a range. As we shared with you last week, this is going to be awarded in the form of a grant, including a required application. The timing on all that has not changed as far as we know at this point. May is the targeted timing of application and June is the targeted award and receipt. And these funds can be used all the way through September 30 of 2021. And that's very important because as you'll see in a few slides, we have a lot of flexibility with this funding. And being able to use it over an extended period of time will really give us the opportunity to use this resource as a tool to manage through the uncertainty in the coming months. Not going to read each one of these next three slides, but they give you a sense of what we can use that $24 million for. Any activity for unauthorized ESEA, IDEA, CTE, Adult Education, or Homeless Youth Education Program, efforts with other government organizations, providing principals and other school leaders resources to address individual needs, school needs, activities to address the unique needs of special student populations, implementing procedures to improve the preparedness and response efforts of LEAs, training or professional development for staff on sanitation, minimizing the spread of infectious disease, purchasing of supplies, planning for providing meals to eligible students, online learning, meeting the requirements of IDEA. So you see they're very broad. Purchasing of educational technology, including hardware, software, and connectivity for students, which can also include assistive technology, providing mental health services and support, planning, implementing summer learning and supplemental after-school programs. And then the last one, kind of liken it to what we include in, most organizations include in job descriptions, kind of like other duties as assigned. This is other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of and continuity of services in LEAs and continuing to employ existing staff of the LEA. Next, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund Component. This we spoke of last week as well. It's 95.6 million. We do now know that the funding formula will be 60% based on population and 40% based on student one population, title one population. There is an application process available to the states. Upon the state submission of an application, the U.S. Department of Education says they will turn around the funds very quickly. At this point, we don't have any additional information on what this ultimately will mean to Wake County Public Schools and we're waiting for additional information. And then last, the last category of specified educational purposes. This is what just came out, formally was approved over the weekend as well. It designates $231.6 million statewide for the following categories. Child nutrition, summer learning, student health, remote learning devices and related support, exceptional children, cybersecurity, and residential schools. You'll see in the graphic over to the right, there's further breakdown on some of those categories. But it gives you a sense again of what these funds we will be able to use. Each of these will be allotted in a separate program code. And at this point, and this is as of information we learned this morning, each school district should definitely receive funds towards child nutrition, summer learning, devices, and contracted mental health. We are still again waiting for additional information. Please understand that the legislation was just passed over the weekend. This is what we know at this point. Some of this funding will be categorized as grants and there will be an application process. And at this point, there is a spending deadline. And at this point, there is a spending deadline of these funds by the end of the calendar year, December 31, 2020. And again, we're waiting for additional information on the allotment formula and other guidelines.
Ms. Neder, let me jump in for a second. Ms. Cash, did you have another question?
I actually did. I just, I had a question about the CARES. So my understanding is, and from what you're presenting, Mr. Neder, is that we have to apply, unlike the county, they automatically have theirs deposited. Their $194 million has already been deposited into their account. We have to apply for our CARES money?
At this point, we do know that we will have to apply for this funding here, again, which can be used in a very broad manner and can be used all the way through September of 2021. We believe at this point that, well, here, the governor, the state has to go through some kind of application process for this governor's component. And then for this category of funding, again, we don't have final definition, but we may have to have an application process for some of this. Yes.
So for the $24.4 million, we have to apply, therefore, we don't have, we don't have access to it right now. But, but the county does actually have access to their $194 million that they've gotten is already in their bank account. I just want to be sure I understood we have to apply for the $24.4 million.
That is correct. And as, as we shared, that funding should become available in June.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I dumped you. Just for clarification, and I may not have completely followed everything in the news, but has this, has the bill gotten through both the House and the Senate and signed by the governor? Or are we, is it just through one chamber?
I believe it's passed both chambers.
Passed both chambers. This is Jonathan, and it's been signed by the governor. It's hot off the press, it's hot off the press, but yes, been signed by, passed by both chambers, signed by the governor.
Thank you.
Okay, got one more chart I'd like to share with you, and I save this for last because it can be a little confusing, but this perhaps gives everyone a sense of how complex this is. What you see, I'll briefly go through this, but over on the state side, on the left, you see that Governor Cooper's emergency. That $50 million in PRC 154 is where we received the $3.8 million from at the onset of this, that we're using the CNS staff compensation. Underneath that, you'll see, and it's routed, the $232 million we were just speaking about for specified uses, but you see, and that was authorized by House Bill 1043, just passed this weekend. And the source of that funding, though, comes from the Federal Cares Act, Coronavirus Relief Act. Then again, under federal CARES funding, you see that $396 million for PRC 163. That's where we, as the state, will receive an estimated $24 million. And then underneath that, that's under the Federal Cares Act, where the governor of North Carolina will receive $96 million to use towards emergency support. And again, we still don't have any additional information on the distribution of that. This just gives a sense of the complexity of what we're working through. And the spending timelines do differ for all these funds. That is what we had to present. We're ready to take any questions. And we still do at this point have on the board meeting agenda for this evening, two action items if the board is ready to move forward. First is waiver of board policy 80101, because as I shared last week, the proposed budget at this point includes an investment of over 50% of the fund balance from the end of the prior year, and that would require waiver of board policy. Then the second agenda item currently on the board action agenda is to approve a proposed, a board's proposed 2020-2021 budget. And with that, Mr. Sutton, I will turn it back to you and the board.
Thank you, Ms. Neder. We'll start with questions. Ms. Kushner.
Thank you, Chair Sutton, and thank you, Mr. Neder, for that presentation. I have a couple of questions. One, when you talked about the new positions, it was listed yes or no, and then some had targets. What does that mean when you said that some were not, were targets?
Okay, good question. We don't, what that means, we don't, let me go back to the slide. We may not have a true, just numerical formula with a student ratio to position ratio, but we have targets. I'll use the transportation district offices. We have targets of, we like to keep a range of how many buses, therefore, how many bus drivers are assigned to each district. So we target that. We have a range, and when we're getting beyond those ranges, we say we want to open additional districts so we can keep it within. I don't have that number off the top of my head. I think it's somewhere between 30 and 50.
So instead of a specific formula, it's a different target that we're using to allocate those months of employment? Okay. But it's driven by some formulaic calculation or?
Underneath, yeah.
Okay. So only four of those are not formula-driven and are choice position, so to speak?
Right. And the other ones on this page, I think, are the instructional support technicians and the social-emotional learning. And again, you'll recall, those are all part of multi-year efforts to expand, to reach a desired ultimate formula, but they're just, we're targeting improvement in the...
Okay. And another question was similar to the transportation maintenance that you're doing. Are we also doing building maintenance while our school buildings are closed, that perhaps we should be front-loading some spending to improve building conditions that we've long had on our list?
Well, I'll take the first crack at that, Ms. Kushner, and then I would ask that we turn it to Don Hayden if he wants to elaborate. We do have additional funding in the current year. This is from an increased county appropriation. And we are able to use that funding, so we do have that. But, Don, I would turn it back over to you if there are needs above and beyond that.
Ms. Kushner, the short answer, and yes, we're getting caught up with a lot of the backlog of maximum work orders. Been pretty steadily eating away at that. So far, I don't think we're going to need additional funds. We've been able to repurpose some funds within the, in the old budget. Some things, you know, we're not doing, and reoriented toward buying parts and so forth. So, so far, we're okay, but we are getting a lot of work done.
Good. I would hope that we can try to fast-track some things that I know families and school leaders have been asking for. So thank you for taking some time to look at them. Thank you. That's it from me, Chair Sutton. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Martin, did you have another question?
Yeah, so not so much another question, but I did just want to express appreciation for putting together the summary of the costs and savings for the COVID time. I understand those are just estimates, but I think it helps us put it all into perspective. So thank you very much for that information.
You're welcome.
Ms. Cash, did you have another question?
Nope, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this point from board members regarding the budget? Ms. Mahaffey?
Thank you. Have we had any indication from the General Assembly that there will be more COVID relief coming from the state, or is this the only package we can anticipate?
Ms. Mahaffey, we have, well, we have not received anything definitive that there will be additional money forthcoming from the state to DPI and the LEAs. I will show that. Again, at this point, what's been appropriated is 2.7 billion of 3.5 billion of funding. And again, if you look at the, and the 2.7 billion that's been appropriated is not all just for education, and it was appropriate for immediate use and also for reserve. And so there is additional funding, federal funding, that has flowed to the state. What it will be used for, I don't know. That's beyond our knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes, I'd like to just follow up on something Ms. Mahaffey just said, which is, by the news accounts that I read, the legislature will consider additional proposals related to COVID-19 relief that could impact us. You know, the House proposal did look at any potential relief from the K-3 class-sized legislation. That was not in the Senate proposal. That was not in the final compromise. But the news reports are telling us that that is still an issue on the table for the short session. So I don't know if it's 100% accurate to say that, you know, we don't know of anything else that's possible. There's definitely nothing guaranteed, but we don't know what the general... ...for their full session, their short session.
Definitely, well-taken. Mr. Hagerty, I heard similar reports. There may be some more work coming. Nothing definite, definitive at this point. Any further comments, Mr. Hagerty?
No, sir. I just thought it was important to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Ms. Johnson-Hossler?
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Back, Mr. Neder, back to Ms. Mahaffey's question, or maybe, maybe Mr. Sutton or Ms. Moore will know the answer. Do you, do you know if the School Boards Association or other advocacy entities are also still planning to advocate to the General Assembly for a little more flexibility around the spending, given our earlier summary that Mr. Neder gave us? Can we anticipate that we can continue to ask for some flexibility so that we have space to move money as needed, or do we think it's still going to be pretty much as the language is currently written?
I would actually turn that perhaps to the superintendent more, or even perhaps the board attorney, who may have more direct information on that, as far as any advocacy and outreach on the School Board Association or other organizations.
I'll start with that. I can say, Ms. Johnson-Hossler, the School Board Association has been quite active in the last few days, and at least getting out information to boards in the surrounding state. And so it, they can say at least appears that there will be some activity and some advocacy around that, but I can't say for certain. Like they're gearing up something like that.
Yeah. So I can tell you that the School Board Association did reach out to all superintendents across the North Carolina and asked us if we had specific questions or concerns about anything that was in both of the bills, to please send that to them because they are re-engaging in conversation sometime tomorrow with legislators about either additional needs or greater flexibility or changes.
Perfect. That's what I was hoping when I read the language, so that's good to hear they are working on that. Thank you.
My information's the same as what's been stated. Thanks.
Mr. Hagerty? Any other questions from the board regarding the budget? CNN, Mr. Neder, thank you and the team for putting this together. I echo the sentiments of Dr. Martin. I strongly appreciate the effort to give us an estimate around some of the unanticipated savings and expenditures. That was quite helpful for us to see this, as well as a quick turnaround on the work from the General Assembly and what is coming from the governor and the General Assembly around the public relief funding, given the governor just signed that yesterday. And this, this actually is hot off the press. Thank you and the team for being able to decipher that for us and bring us that report so quickly. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes, and we will provide a little bit of a broader overview of what's in both bills as part of the COVID-19 update as well.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Moore. All right, moving to our second item on the agenda, resolution requesting funds for a capital improvement program. That is Don Hayden and Brian Roof. Mr. Hayden, I'll turn it over to you.
Chair Sutton and Superintendent Moore, board members, thank you for the opportunity to come and present our capital improvement plan update. I know Mr. Hayden wanted to open up with a couple of comments, so I'll turn it over to him. I'm sharing my screen at the moment, and we'll walk you through the presentation, but we'll, we'll turn over the introduction to Mr. Hayden to get us started. Mr. Hayden, are you still there and available?
I'm unable to unmute.
We got you. You're unmuted now. Okay, there you are, Mr. Hayden.
Can you hear me now?
You can hear me now, sir.
Chair Sutton, members of the board, Superintendent Moore, apologize for that. I'm having trouble getting unmuted. First off, let me apologize and say that the pre-C that's in Assembly is not the right one. We're not going to talk about a resolution today, but the correct one is attached to the, to the pre-C in Assembly there. And what we're going to do is present an update on the seven-year capital improvement program today. I'm just going to open up with a little bit of history and the context of where we are today, and then I'm going to turn it back over to Brian Roof, and he'll go into more details. Just to give a little bit of context and history again, back seems like forever, back on the 11th of March, the Facilities Committee. back on the 11th of March at the Facilities Committee, Brian, uh, shared the seven-year CIP proposal, and at that time, we planned to come back at the April 14th meeting to present the CIP for approval and to present the resolution requesting that the county provide the funding over the seven years for the CIP. Uh, then in early April, we learned from the county that they had to revise their revenue projections based on the COVID-19, uh, closures and the lower revenue. And, uh, of course, that had an impact on our funding for the capital program. Just as a reminder, that our capital improvement program funding comes from two sources within the county. One is cash or pay-as-you-go funds, and the other is debt funding. Of what the reduction in funding was, um, that's, this is what we hear from Brian, reduction in cash of 39 million total over three years, and a reduction in debt financing of about 8.7 million over two years, FY '22 and '23. Once receiving those reductions, uh, our staff worked very closely with the county staff to revise the CIP, and we were able to use some savings from previous bond programs to help reduce the impact of, of reductions. Now, what that means is from every bond program we have, that at the end of that bond program, there's usually some savings from contingency or, or whatever, lower costs, and we're able to, uh, use those for the follow-on program. So, we were able to mitigate, uh, reductions then. And then, of course, we plan to bring that back to today's meeting for approval. Well, then, last week, we heard around two reductions, so, the second round was an additional, uh, $16 million reduction in cash spread over four years, '22 to '25, and a reduction in debt funding of 37, 6.9 million in '24 and '25, but an actual increase in funding of 50 million in the following year, FY '26. So, on the debt side, it was reduced about 37 million in '24 and '25, and then increased, again, 50 million more in '26. So, the county team and the Wake County and the school system team are going to meet this week and try to figure out what we can, how we can best make those reductions with having the minimal impact on our schools and on our, our plan program. And we'll bring that back to the Board, hopefully, on the 29th, if we don't learn any more cuts in the meantime, uh, to the Board to approve the CIP and also to, uh, approve the resol, uh, resolution to the county seeking funding. And before I turn it over to Brian, I just want to take a second to note that, um, it's really been impressive to me to see the cooperation, the collaboration between, uh, our school system staff, uh, that, all, all areas that are working on the CIP, um, and with the county staff, um, you know, just working very cooperatively as a team to address our, our capital provision. And so, with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Brian to give us the more details.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hayden, and, um, wanted to announce that I'm, I'm joined here in our presentation with Jack McLeer, our Director for Programming Controls as well. Um, we want to walk you through a current update, um, in summary, and let you, and, and share with you what the, um, what the current plan, uh, looks like with some of the adjustments that Mr. Hayden had shared. Uh, as we go through this, I wanted to, um, revisit what our initial schedule and deliverable milestones were. Um, the, the top section here was our initial schedule, running through, uh, April of this year. You can see that in April, we looked to conclude the existing school prioritization, uh, and, and wrap up our rubric efforts, as well as the CIP updates. As you heard from Mr. Hayden, um, with the COVID-19, uh, impact and some of the adjustments since then, um, some of those deliverables and exercises, uh, have, uh, have changed for us. The second section on this screen, the deliverable milestone, is highlighted in April, um, just indicates what we were intending to bring forward, uh, but then again, as, as noted towards the bottom of this slide, the changes in, in March with the COVID-19 impacts, um, have revised our schedule and our deliverables, and we're going to talk in a moment about that. Wanted to bring everybody back though for a full circle on what our intentions and plans were, uh, until recently in, in April. Our next slide here is a, is a summary, it's a snapshot of the draft capital improvement plan that we shared at the Facilities Committee in March. It is condensed, um, to be able to have on this slide. There is a PDF that is in Assembly, uh, with the expanded, uh, summary for the capital improvement plan, so that everyone, as we go through this presentation, if you need to reference back and see exactly which new schools or which renovation schools are in the plan, you can reference that document. Again, we've rolled them up here for the purposes of having a consolidated plan that we can review with you. Also, I'll note, just for, for, for quick, uh, to point out very quickly, the totals at the bottom of this slide, um, for the capital improvement plan for each fiscal year, um, may vary slightly from the version, the PDF version, only because the, the, the PDF version that we shared in March was rounded to the nearest hundred thousand, thousand of a dollar, where this is exact. So, there's some slight, uh, tweaks at the bottom, total values. But as you can see here, um, we have, uh, the draft included, uh, full or partial funding for 17 schools, design and, uh, and construction funding, um, oh, excuse me, I'm, sorry. Um, design and construction funding for several schools, including a new elementary school that would be fully funded, both design and construction, and delivered fiscal year '28. Our draft plan also included, uh, the design funds for three new elementary schools, the construction funding fell outside of the seven-year window, and obviously, the delivery and opening of those new elementary schools are also outside. Full or partial funding of nine existing schools renovations. Um, you can see there, I put an additional note just to, um, draw your attention to how much funding and appropriation had been assigned in fiscal year '20, which we just moved past, um, for existing needs. There, we, we went through a really, um, high, uh, push on and focus on existing needs in fiscal year '20, and, uh, some of those schools that we were able to, uh, to address with those needs. Below are all the, um, program requirements, and again, all married up to what we had shared in March. Mr. Hayden, moving forward, as Mr. Hayden had mentioned, uh, this is a revised draft of our CIP, um, the requests, what I've, what I've titled Request One for Reduction, that we went through as a CIP team on April 23rd. A whole things I'd like to draw your attention to. As Mr. Hayden mentioned, at the bottom of this slide in gray, are some of the reduction requests we received from the county. Pago or cash funding lines, we were asked to, to reduce those in total of 13 million per fiscal year in '21, '22, and '23. And then debt funds, we were asked to reduce 3, 3.5, 5.15 in fiscal years '22 and '23. The way our CIP team addressed those needs, uh, are highlighted here on the screen. The true reductions were done in two line items. Technology devices were reduced 5 million a year in fiscal year '21, '22, and '23. And the SNAP fund line item was reduced, um, thir, down to 13 million, 12 and 1/2, and 15 million in those same years. Program contingency and program management as a, uh, percentage of the, of the program as a total were also reduced. Those are, those are the three line items that have a, a, a true reduction. We have offset or reduced life cycle and land in the plan. However, we're looking to utilize savings that we have in, uh, prior programs and prior projects, along with some unappropriated, uh, program contingency from fiscal year '21 to make up the difference. So, in summary, the values originally shown in life cycle and land will be funded to their full amounts by a combination of appropriations and use of savings and program contingency. Very quickly, the program contingency, we've, or I'm, sorry, the program savings, we've done a, um, somewhat of a forensic analysis on past programs and projects, um, and reviewing roughly 30 projects. We found, uh, roughly about 2% worth of savings across a, a pretty deep dive into past programs, and that's where we were able to make up some of those reductions. At the bottom of this slide in black is the total reduction needed based on the county's request and what we've been able to accomplish within the CIP that met that, that need and that request, and again, uh, backfilling with savings and program contingency. Moving forward to last week, and again, the need to, to revise our presees and what we're bringing forward to you today, is an additional request from the county. This is request number two, as of May 1st. The difference in this document, the only difference is at the bottom of the page in the, in the cells and rows in gray, you'll see highlighted a revised request for Pago, cash reductions of 3 million for both fiscal year '22 and '23, 5 million in '24 and '25, and then debt reductions in fiscal year '24 and '25 combined with that bond window of 37 million. That's why that's split between the two. We need to find that 37 million somewhere within this 24 and 25 years. But there is capacity in fiscal year '26 for 50 million. Over to the right-hand side, you can see the delta then, so there's an additional reduction of 16 million in total for cash, but actually, of the potential for an increase of 13 million with that move, reduction of 37 and, and, and capacity of 50 in fiscal year '26. Next steps for us as a team, we're having a, an internal Wake County, uh, Public School CIP team meeting tomorrow to discuss the recent request that we received from the county late last week, and we've shared some of those high-level points with, uh, our team members to begin to evaluate, uh, options. Our core team is going to meet, uh, later this week to review the recommendations that the CIP team has. We'd like to find an opportunity to inform the board members of our final recommendations coming out behind the CIP and the core team, and then, a, as, as Mr. Hayden shared, plan to bring our resolution forward on May 19th. I do want to take just a moment and, um, thank our CIP team members, our core team members. This is a fluid situation, it's a challenging situation, it requires, um, quite a bit of, uh, collaboration, deep dive, and, and as you can imagine, a lot of conversation, uh, focused on needs and opportunities and, and constraints and challenges. So, I'd like to thank all of our team members, uh, for your work so far on this and, and your continued efforts. With that, that's a, a quick summary of our presentation, what we wanted to share with you today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Roof and Mr. Hayden. Uh, we'll start with questions, uh, Ms. Kushner.
Thank you, Chair Sutton and Mr. Roof and Mr. Hayden for that added information. Um, I have a couple of questions. One quick one is, does the CIP team include staff from student enrollment, Ms. Rory and Mr. Carosa, are they on, related?
It does.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Because again, like, the money is also fluid, so is our, um, you know, enrollment pressure, so I, I just wanted to confirm that they were on that team. And I appreciated Mr. Hayden's comment about the, um, collaboration between the county and the formation of the core team, um, so I'm sure that was striking to him in his return to Wake County, and I appreciate the fact that this is done collaboratively, but, um, and then, in a more fluid situation than we've had in recent years, so, um, thanks for, for the work y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kushner.
Did you call on me?
I did.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Thank you as well, um, Ryan and Mr. Hayden, for all the work that you've done, as well as everybody else in the CIP team. My question would be to the CIP teams, as far as our decrease in tech devices, maybe Ms. Gaddis can answer more about that. It may be in relationship to what has already been put into the tech devices at this point from our immediate need. Uh, my understanding would be that that would all be covered by the county's, or Wake County's system, but even more importantly, maybe the Wake County budget in their COVID dollars, that we would not decrease the tech device? I would think that there should be some dialogue on that.
So, Ms. Cash, I can, I can respond to that very quickly. We have talked to the county, I have spoken to the county about the, uh, opportunity to leverage some of their current CARES funding that they have, or the expenditures that we have had most recently with regards to facilitating the remote learning that we're engaged in right now, and any remote learning needs that we may have moving forward, and to the extent that the source of the funds to try to facilitate that would have been what was in the CIP, it could now be shifted to some, some collaboration with the county, to a different source of funds. So, that conversation is happening.
Uh, thank you. I, I definitely want to be sure we use this, it's not an opportunity, but it's, it's a bad situ, uh, situation on COVID, but it's an opportunity for us to get to a one-to-one device, and so, hopefully, we can get the government to help us fund that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Dr. Martin?
Thank you. I share that, uh, same question, uh, raised by Ms. Cash about the, the tech. Uh, I think it's important for us to remember that the, uh, tech infrastructure that's here in the CIP is, uh, not intended to deal with acute needs, but really is a long-term refresh. Uh, our, our goal was to, with, with even the, the three-to-one device, I think it was to replace every three years-ish, or something like that, and, and likewise, tech, uh, you know, for our teachers. So, I just think it's really important for us to keep that in mind, that this is, uh, you know, our long-term infrastructure refresh, which is different from our acute, uh, response to COVID. So, I share that concern about the cut to the tech and not seeing those dollars rebuilding, uh, you know, later. The, I, I have, you know, it hasn't been addressed yet, is if I think back to, uh, what happened in our, our CIP program during the last recession, we understandably have backed off a little bit, um, because, you know, everybody feels like we can't create funds for new construction when we're, um, going through a recession. That said, building costs were low, and our needs only grew, and so it meant, in fact, a recession is a, a good time to be investing in infrastructure, because it keeps people employed, and he, as we know from Michael Walden's study, any dollars that we spend on capital infrastructure come back with, I think it was like a $276 return to the county. In fact, investing in infrastructure is, uh, very good for the economy, uh, in trying to do some recession recovery. So, we can build usually at a lower cost, we meet, and we, we, we keep from getting further behind, and we potentially stimulate the economy. So, we learned that lesson from the last recession. I guess my question is, and it may be too early to, to make any statement in that regard yet, and I, I fully understand that, we, we've got to do the CIP for now because there are deadlines as to when it passes, but I'd just like to know what, what thought is going on so that we can learn from what happened in the last recession, uh, in terms of, uh, moving forward, which I think will keep us from getting further behind, it will build infrastructure, and I think it will help the economy.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I can say from the CIP team's, uh, position, and, and maybe there's others that would want to offer a comment, um, we've really looked at this and worked hard to, to mitigate, uh, the request for reduction and, and utilize, um, opportunities, um, and to, and really uncover every rock we could think of to, to maximize, um, what I would call this opportunity ahead of you to, to take advantage of what's likely to be to be a, a market and industry shift. We're still trying to study what that's going to look like from a cost per square foot material, but we certainly see an, an opportunity ahead of us to, to leverage the position for the district in the program to, to maximize that opportunity. And so, you know, that's where I would again applaud our, our CIP team for doing those type of analysis that allow us to find those savings, so that we don't have to, we can protect or mitigate the reduction and offset it as much as possible. And those efforts continue to go, to go forward even now, to find additional opportunities that will allow us to push in and get work in place while we, while we move through this period of time that could be advantageous for you to get that worked on.
Yeah, thank you. Like I said, I wanted to raise this because I wanted to, I want to make sure it stays in front of our mind as we go forward. It's too premature, I believe, right now to make any decisions based on that thinking, but where we go in the future, I think, you know, we need to be strategic. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. This is Mahaffey.
Thank you. Brian and, and Mr. Hayden, if, based on what you're telling us, we're not seeing at this time any changes to our construction timetable other than in the SNAP category? Is that correct?
Well, I'm trying to go back on our slide real quickly. The initial request, request one that we got at the end of April, we were really able to, to protect the schools and those new schools and renovations up above. We limited the impact down below, and again, we offset a lot of that with some savings and program contingency that had been allocated. Moving forward, however, our CIP team needs to get together tomorrow to look at the second request, and then again, get back to the core team, because the debt reduction request in fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five with the capacity then in twenty-six, we've got to spend some time studying what that means for our school projects listed up above.
Okay, so we'll know more after the team meets and possibly after the, the next board meeting?
Correct. Round one kept us, the schedule where we had it, round two may result in, in a modification. We're, we're going to know more about that by the end of this week.
Okay. Thank you guys so much for keeping us updated with what you have and, and what we're working towards. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. Mr. Fletcher, I see you just joined us. Since much of this work came out of a works with the facilities committee, did you have any comments or anything that you wanted to add or say?
Well, not, I don't want to step on whatever other people have said, and I apologize for being late, I had a business commitment. The, as, as best I understand where we are now, our projects that have been committed to will continue to be funded and completed. In the out years where there is some flexibility, we may be looking at the delay of a project, maybe a year, all that is unknown, and as, as Brian, Mr. Ruth indicated, our internal team will be working with the county's team to figure out what that looks like. I want to say that I appreciate the county's continued commitment to fund our capital program, albeit at a slightly less robust way than we had planned for, and to, to commit to continue to work with the county so that we can meet as many of the known needs of our, for, for, for capital improvements in our schools, that's new schools, renovated schools, reconditioned schools, replaced schools as we can as we move forward. We know that we've got more than eleven thousand kids in trailers, we know that we've got schools that are capped, we know that our needs to continue to provide excellent educational resources continue, and we don't, we won't lose sight of that, but we're also pragmatist and realist to know that working with our partners and the county is the right thing for us to do at this time.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. Ms. Cash, did you have another question?
No.
All right, Mr. Hayden, Ms. Mr. Ruth, anything else?
Nothing else from us. I appreciate the opportunity to come forward to the board members today and leadership and, and share with you in real time some of the adjustments and, and challenges and opportunities that we continue to work on. It's important to us to be transparent and, and, and communicate clearly and openly and, and quickly. So I look forward to wrapping up the CIP, hopefully later this month, and then we, we will focus back in the facility committees and talk about some of the actionable items behind this that we've had to temporarily pause, and, and how we look to restart and refocus on those items as well. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that takes us to our next item on the agenda, which is the update COVID-nineteen response. This is given by Superintendent Moore and her leadership team. Superintendent Moore, I'll turn it over to you. If you could start, off to your team.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. As we get the presentation up, there'll be several folks that will be speaking today about different components of our response from the district. I'll jump in in the middle at some point to give a little bit more detail on the legislative updates and the two bills that were passed this weekend, and we will go ahead and get started with, I believe it's Paul who starts yet.
Good afternoon, Chief Sutton, Superintendent Moore, and board members. I'm here today to present to you some updates about our food distribution efforts. Before the update, I, I'd like to again express gratitude for the work of our child nutrition services team, our bus drivers, transportation team, and school social worker team who are working daily to get meals out to as many families as possible in our county. In addition, this wouldn't be possible without our partners from Wake County Cooperative Extension, Interface Food Shuttle, and the Food Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina. We want to say a big thank you to them as well. In addition to our Western Region site partners, Overflowing Hands, YMCA Boys and Girls Club, and all the volunteers who've supported our work, thank you again for joining us in this effort to ensure food security and access in all of Wake County. So to go to the, the meals prepared so far, so from March seventeenth through May first, we've prepared over six-hundred-seventy-five thousand meals as a group, and our daily average is roughly twenty-three thousand meals prepared. And starting, starting, it started on Monday, but we expanded to additional school distribution sites at the sites listed up there, Lake Myra, Wakala, Willow Springs High School Site, Banks Road, Holly Springs, and Lynn Road, and starting tomorrow, we're going to be adding four additional neighborhood locations for our big bus food trucks. And so with schools closed through the end of the school year, we're planning for the following, as we continue this work of food distribution, we're planning to figure out our, a way to continue food distribution into the summer in case there is a need, and we're continuing to assess and expand our Wake County Public School System distribution sites as needed, and we're also working with partners throughout our county to expand to needed areas for the summer where WCPSS is not able to distribute directly. Thank you for your support in all these efforts, and now I'll pause for questions before I pass it on to Marlo Getz.
Okay, no questions at this time, Mr. Coe, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Kushner.
Thank, thank you, Chair Sutton. Mr. Coe, I was going to ask this during the budget, but for the, the county's support for this summer nutrition, I know that the county is active usually during the summer. So are we going to be able to manage our emergency funds in a way that we can maximize both their fund and our fund? Are we working closely with the county to make sure that we're reaching as many families as we can, but also that we're maximizing and leveraging the funds that are available to each agency?
Yes, ma'am. For, for that question, we meet daily with our county partners, it's possible, they're on the food distribution, and so we're in close partnership with them, and in terms of potential summer food distribution efforts, we'll be working with them as closely as we have been since March seventeen.
I, I do understand that it's not, you know, just our families, but just folks are coming to our food sites from other schools and, as well as, as our own families, so I appreciate that we are truly a community asset in this effort and working with the county. We are, again, serving as a true community asset, but thank you to your and your, you and your staff. I was also struck by how generous the community was in contributing to the emergency CNS Fund charitably. So thanks to you and Mr. Luca and to all of our leadership for allowing, you know, for being in the community so that we are getting those contributions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Kushner.
Thank you, Ms. Kushner. Mr. Fletcher?
Well, more of a, more of a comment, Mr. Chair, and that is that many of our community may not realize that our child nutrition program during the school year is a self-supporting, what we call an enterprise fund. Without selling meals, we're running a deficit of income, but we continue with the expenses of providing service, preparing the food, et cetera, and it's the right thing for us to do. There are some, some supplements coming from other sources that will help mitigate those expenses, but just want folks to know that when, when kids aren't in school, our enterprise fund is not fully funded, and so we're having to find funds from other places, and be it from other places in the school district or other places with other care funds from different sources. Just want to clarify that, I've had some people ask me about that, and our folks are doing a magnificent job in preparing and distributing food, and the, the folks who are on the front line of delivering that to families just have told me anecdote after anecdote of the joy and the appreciation that our families who need this service are expressing when they're able to pick up food and keep their family healthy. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, for that comment. Ms. Johnson-Hosler.
Thank you. Again, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and definitely will try to remember, Mr. Coe, to say when we go to our, our board meeting, open session, but thank you as a team for meeting daily. I'm, I'm here to say that, I made a request last week, I just finished volunteering just before I jumped on this call, and all of those changes were made quickly, and so I think it's important that people know how swiftly the feedback is actually being taken into consideration and really being implemented, both by our county partners, but you and Mr. Luca Shop, and more important, including the folks who are in the community doing this work. So hats off, and thank you for being very open to my feedback, and I'm sure you're getting lots of feedback, but I do appreciate and want to thank the team, because I know there's countless hours that you all are putting in these daily meetings to really continue to streamline this process. And to Ms. Kushner's point, as we start to, you know, people are really, today, I got a lot of questions about what this looks like when we start transitioning into summer, and so I appreciate the forethought that you all are already putting into what this transition will look like and the work and efforts that we continue to go into this.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hosler.
And Ms. Kushner, do you have another comment or question?
No, sir, I will lower my hand. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. All right, that does it then for food distribution. Next up?
Good afternoon, Chairman Sutton, Superintendent Moore, and the board. It is a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. I would like to begin, first of all, by thanking a few folk. I would like to thank the board, I would like to thank our leadership, as well as the county leadership, and the support that you guys have given to our department, and then I would also be remiss not to thank my own department, as well as our wonderful partners in the area superintendent's office, as well as technology, the work that they're doing in academic advancement, and our transportation department. All have been fantastic partners, and that's why we've been able to do what I'm going to share with you today. So as of the second, which was Sunday, we had twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and two devices that were requested, and the devices that had been checked out as of Sunday was twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty. Hotspots that had been requested, we're at nine thousand and sixty-two hotspots, and as of Sunday, three thousand six hundred and sixty-four of those hotspots have been checked out. Our help desk, our remote help desk that is for our families and our students, we've received one thousand nine hundred and seventy tickets, and one thousand three hundred and thirty-six of those tickets have currently been resolved. So amazing amount of work done in a short amount of time. Right now, our next steps, for your awareness, we've begun second round of device distributions this week, so we had approximately one thousand seven hundred Chromebooks that were requested after the initial requests were, were put out, and an additional seven hundred and fifty hotspots that were also requested. This week, actually, the end of last week, we began doing deliveries of devices and hotspots for students through transportation, so for our families who could not get out to pick up their devices, transportation is now delivering those to the homes of those students. We've also begun, just like our, our counterparts in academic advancement, and in, and, and our calendars, and all of, all over the district, we've already begun planning for what 2020, 2021 looks like. We're getting a lot of input from our, our different departments, as well as some students and parents and families who are starting to, to wonder what comes next, and so we're taking all that information in and looking forward to what's coming next. So with that, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Ms. Cash?
I just want to say that I really appreciate this effort. I've watched it, and I think it's pretty amazing where it's going out so fast, and the fact that you have received that many tickets and thirteen hundred and thirty-six have been resolved, I think that's amazing. I've heard that, that from parents that I've talked to, that when they have a question, it gets handled very quickly, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Cash.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Ms. Mahaffey?
I just want to say, on a personal note, I had to call the help desk this past week for an issue with my children's technology services, and the level of service and, and relationship and just professionalism that came from the help desk was awesome, and, you know, this, this was just me calling as a parent, and, and, you know, it, it was, I hope that that's out there often, so that parents who might feel frustrated can get help from these wonderful people who are waiting and, and willing and able to help. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey.
Ms. Kushner?
Thank you, Chair Sutton, and I'll echo those sentiments, and that Ms. Gaddis just raised, as you're thinking of 2020, 21, you know, I do, I do have some concerns about the sustainability of this effort. It is, there's a lot going on very quickly, and so I do hope that the private partners that we've had, we've been able to attract through volunteers and through corporate support, will continue to support us and work with our school system. As I've been saying, it, it proves again what a valuable community partner we, we have, but also what a valuable, valuable community asset that what public schools are. So thank you for your efforts, and I will stay tuned to see how sustainable those efforts can be in the long run, and let us know as a board how we can help you do that. Yes, I appreciate that, Ms. Kushner. Sustainability is also a great concern of, of mine as well, as well as our department's, and so whatever our next steps end up being, that will be something that we are paying very close attention to. Thank you.
In that, in that vein, Ms. Gaddis, and I would go back to Mr. Coe, too, as you all provide these updates, Superintendent Moore. provide these updates, Superintendent Moore, are, what are there, are there any considerations for the board as you move through both challenges and successes around COVID, as you, as you look at the device rollout or providing meals? Are there any particular considerations for the board, both fiscal, policy, that, that you want to make, make us aware of either at this time or as you develop your presentations in the future, maybe including a slide or a few bullet points around any considerations for the board? As you think about sustainability, again, that might play into the budget piece, in thinking about the devices, when you, about repairs, replacement, that sort of thing, particularly as we move into thinking about your last bullet around planning for 2021 and the reopening of schools, any considerations that you all might, that you think about that, that it will, that it, that would be worth sharing with the board? I think we all would love and appreciate hearing your considerations that you might have.
I appreciate that, Mr. Sutton. I cannot speak for Mr. Coe, but I would imagine similarly, one of the, the issues that we're going to have long-term is, right now, our remote learning help desk is staffed almost entirely by volunteers. These are our library media coordinators and our technology contacts in the schools. So once we get to a point where we are trying to sustain this, we're going to have some, some human capital conversations that we're going to have to look at within our own departments, making sure that we're still able to provide a level of service to our community because that's, that's very important, but understanding that a lot of what we've been able to do in the district up until this point has been because of great volunteers, whether that was through Activate Good or through our own school folk going forward.
Thank you for that. All right. Seeing no other questions from the board regarding technology. Next up, Superintendent Moore.
Hello again, Chair Sutton and board members. I'm going to spend a few minutes providing a little more detail about both the House and Senate bills that were passed this weekend and the education portions, how they will impact us and what we know at this time. You've gotten a little bit of it already from the information that David Neder gave earlier, and we're going to just go a little bit further in, in my presentation. So there's a lot of stuff in these bills. The major funding items, there is a piece, and this is relevant to the conversation that we were having just a few minutes ago, around school nutrition for $75 million. That is designed, I believe, it will help and support our efforts to continue our food security efforts, not just through the rest of the school year, but also into the summer. We do not yet know what portion of that 75 million WCPSS is getting, but obviously it will go towards our ongoing efforts. And I will point out that rather than write million in every single category, I've only used the dollar amount, but it's all, everything is in millions moving forward. For devices and connectivity, and there's a couple of different categories here, it's about $47 million. This is, covers both devices for students for remote learning as well as devices potentially for staff for remote learning, as well as some combination of dollars to DPI that might be used to put Wi-Fi on buses, that could be put in neighborhoods or additional connectivity, in particular for those parts of the state where connectivity is an issue just because of a lack of service. A lot of our western counties have very spotty service. So there's, it's unclear how much of that will come to Wake County. In most of these areas, it's unclear exactly how much will come to WCPSS. There is a section on instructional support. This is for contracted services. It's $10 million that will be given to DPI for contracted services for school health support personnel. This could be counselors, social workers, nurses, those types of staff. Again, it's contracted services, so it's unclear exactly how that will be operationalized, whether the dollars will flow to districts or there will be some sort of support effort from DPI. I suspect the former. There are also grants, $5 million worth, that will be for extended learning and integrated student supports. And this is, again, specifically targeted for at-risk students. And it will require that districts submit grants for evidence-based programs that support the needs of at-risk students as we return, knowing that those students will have even greater needs when they come back to us. It's a grant program. There's a statewide shared cybersecurity infrastructure bill that's four and a half million that goes to DPI as well. They're looking to expand our learning management platform by $1.5 million. Given the number of students who are logging into Canvas and doing that work, there is some additional need for improvement in our learning platform. There's also a $3 million line item for non-digital remote instruction resources for students with limited connectivity. It's unclear exactly how those will be distributed, but we know that some students, there are different kinds of barriers that, that go with limited connectivity. And if it's an inability to get internet because of where you are in a rural location, these are dollars to support the cost of printed materials or other remote resources that would need to go to those students. On the next slide, some additional major funding items, and this next one is a big one. There's a summer learning program that is funded at $70 million in the bill. Each LEA is required to submit a learning plan to DPI by June 22nd, and the funds must be used by December 30th. And the intent of these funds is to support students who have been negatively impacted by the impacts of COVID-19. There are probably two pages in the legislation about these $70 million, but the main bullet points are reading interventions for K3 students based on whatever assessments were able to be administered prior to the closure on March 13th. You will note that we were using iStation to administer assessments and should have completed a mid-year assessment. So based on those assessments, we may have students who will be targeted for some reading interventions for this summer program. There's, there's also some of the dollars are for reading interventions for fourth and fifth grade students. This is based on teacher identification. There's, there are also some of the dollars are for math interventions for K4. The days that are used for the summer learning program cannot be part of the scheduled instructional days in the calendar for the year. So they must be outside of the instructional calendar. There, there's a, a lot of other detail about how the program needs to be implemented and diagnostic assessments and that sort of thing. And I attached both of the bills as backup in simply, if you'd like to read through them. I think the House is 25 pages long and the Senate is 70 pages long. I have read them, but more than once. The next section on DPI grants, this is again, 15 million, and these are to support extraordinary costs associated with extended school year needs of exceptional children who qualify for service. So this is E S, E S Y services for students who qualify for those services. And then the next section, these are major bill provisions, not necessarily funding items. So under accountability, all EOCs and EOGs are waived. Students will not have to take those this year. There is a provision that the ACT administration that was missed for juniors this past spring would now be administered to seniors in the fall. And now if the seniors took another standardized test, SAT or ACT on their own, they don't have to take it in the fall, but we must make it available to all. There's also some K3 diagnostics and formative requirements, that's the end of the year iStation work that needed to be done. All of those requirements that were still in place after March 13th have been waived. The Work Keys, which is a test, has been waived for CTE concentrators. That is a test that they are required to take when they are in a CTE concentrator course. So that's just really about testing and accountability. On school report cards, they have determined that school performance grades will not be displayed for 2021 based on the 2019 data. So there will be no school performance grades next year. And LEAs will not be required to produce school building reports based on that 1920 data. So the, the reports will go away. Additional provisions, there's some provisions around the designations for low-performing and continuously low-performing schools. They will identify no new schools for 2020, 21, based on 1920 data because there will be no assessments in 1920. Schools who have previously been identified will continue in that same designation and schools previously identified will also need to continue to carry out their school improvement plans that were submitted last year in December to DPI. They'll just need to continue their work in those areas. With regards to the Innovative School District, you will note that there are, there was a requirement that a certain number of schools be identified every year, the lowest 5% performing in the state. There will be no new schools identified as qualifying schools in 2020, 21, based on 1920 data. However, schools that were identified in 1920, based on the 2018, 19 data, will remain on the list as eligible or qualifying schools for the Innovative School District. Few more major provisions. There's a lot of language in there around third grade retention, reading camps, fourth grade reading assessment, and a report to the State Board of Education. They're wanting to expand the, third grade retention will still remain at the school level with regards to the principal having the legislative authority to grade and classify, but there are some requirements about how parents will be involved and a part of that decision-making process. It really does run along similar lines to things that we do already, but it's very explicit in the legislation. We will not have reading camps as we know them this summer, the Read to Achieve Summer Camps. Instead, we will have what's happening with the reading camp that has, the summer learning camp that has been funded at $70 million. We will be required at the beginning of fourth grade to give a reading assessment to all students based on what would have been like the end of year third grade EOG in order to get some diagnostic information for students. You know, to the extent that those, the EOGs give us good information, there is actually language all throughout the bills around diagnostic information that teachers will need to get at the beginning of the school year next year for students. And while this highlights the need in fourth grade for this year's third graders, I do believe that we will be needing to do diagnostic work across all grade levels in lots of content areas as we move forward next year at the beginning of the school year. There's also some language around advanced math course placement. You will recall that the legislature has language and requirements around how students are identified for advanced math coursework, and that will continue into next year. There is additional language that highlights the role of a parent and how a parent can engage should a teacher not recommend a student for a math course that is advanced and the ability of that student to perhaps take a test at the beginning of the school year that demonstrates some mastery from the prior year. And then that score will need to be used for determining math placement for the incoming school year. The CPR graduation requirements, you know, that all of our seniors are required to achieve a certificate in CPR, that graduation requirement has been waived for 1920, which is our current 12th grade students, our current seniors. For 1920, our current school year calendar, the legislation states that if districts have implemented remote instruction, then, then we are deemed to have satisfied the minimum days and hours required for 1920. Additional provisions. Now we're talking about the calendar for 2020, 21. So I probably should have flipped the first two bullets. Each LEA has to submit a remote learning plan by July 20th, 2020. And in this remote learning plan, we must include what the district is going to do with five additional days of remote learning that are required. These five additional days are beyond the days already included in the board's approved calendars that meet all of the legislative requirements. So we have approved calendars for next year. In addition to those approved calendars, we must add five days, and those five days are designated as remote learning days. And the plan that says what we're going to do during those remote learning days must be submitted to DPI by July 20th. We've not received a template or anything yet, but we know that that is coming. There is language in the legislation that sets an expectation that because we are planning for the remote learning ahead of time, that it will be robust and that it will advance the learning of students. And it really is targeted and designed to support the fact that students have lost time, and so we are adding five days back. So I will say that with the exception, then in the next bullet, with the exception of year-round modified early college high schools or approved restarts, all schools must have an opening date of August 17th, which is one week earlier than what we had planned, August 24th, and then a closing date of June 11th. And the remote days cannot be scheduled prior to August 24th. So what they're saying there is that the remote learning days cannot be part of that first initial week that is part of our calendars. For the, just to go back to the remote learning days and year rounds, so right now, for the remote learning for multi-track year-round schools and for all of our other calendars, those additional five days of remote learning will likely need to be scheduled during, during currently scheduled teacher workdays. There is no additional funding in the legislation to pay teachers for an additional five days. So we have to carve those five days of remote learning out of existing days that teachers are working. And so that will likely come during teacher workdays. And for, and so that means some time during trackout and that sort of thing. You know, I know that our families in multi-track year-round schools are on pins and needles and our principals and everyone around what we're going to be able to do in July. We are currently planning for a traditional start to the multi-track year-round school, but we know that we're going to have to be flexible and have some contingency plans in the event that is not possible. And that's just about the timing of when we will open. For all of our schools, we're going to need to look at what opening looks like in terms of following the health guidelines and requirements and safety protocols that may be applicable at that time. So moving on, couple of other quick things in the major bill provisions, school improvement plans, there's language in there around how those will continue. There's some language around principal recruitment supplement and, you know, how principals get some bonuses and how that will continue. Some language waiving the need to report teacher effectiveness for the next school year based on current year data because we won't have assessments. I starred the teacher evaluations and observations because one of the things that we required, that the legislature was required to do because evaluations and observations do have legislative language behind them, is that whatever evaluations were completed as of March 13th will be used to complete the process with teachers and no observations will be required beyond March 13th, which aligns well with some guidance that we had put out to our principals already around that work. And then there's some language in the bill around expansion of licensure requirements for teachers and school personnel that have to take tests or pass certain other requirements in order to have their licenses renewed or issued. And so those are on hold for a year as they, because everyone is, doesn't have the ability to even take the test or complete the requirements that are currently in place. I will have, Jonathan wanted to talk a little bit about the language in the bill regarding remote board meetings and that sort of thing. So I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan to talk a bit.
Good afternoon. I hope everybody is well. I miss you. So the, in terms of the, this law, it did, it was signed by the governor yesterday. I've sent you links to the law as well as the North Carolina School Boards Association summaries of the law. And just very recently, and I know you've been in a meeting, but sent you an email just that you can look at later, that is a, a specific summary of the aspect of the law that addresses remote board meetings and remote hearings during a declared emergency. I just want to take a second during this time to just sort of hit the high points of that. Sort of the short version is continuing, continue doing what you're doing. I think you anticipated the issues of remote board meetings and potential hearings and, and filled in very nicely with the way you've been, you know, conducting the meetings. But there are a couple of particulars that are in the new law that I just want to bring out. First of all, when it comes to votes on most- Uh, first of all, uh, when it comes to votes on motions, that those do need to be by roll call. Perhaps, um, you know, that will make things easier for minutes, uh, but it is a, a particular requirement now that they be done by roll call. Obviously, you can't do written ballots. Um, that would be difficult under these circumstances anyway, but that is specifically prohibited during these, uh, remote meetings. So roll call votes, um, also that, uh, board members should stay, um, continuously viewable, um, you know, visible, um, during the remote meetings. If you're not able to do that for some reason, um, have called in or what have you because of internet connectivity issues or what have you, then the law does indicate that you need to sort of announce yourself, uh, when you're speaking, um, participating, voting, and during the, uh, start of the meeting when there would be a roll call. Um, so those are a couple of the added particulars. There's, there's certainly some other aspects of that, uh, but I wanted to bring those to your attention. Uh, when it comes to, uh, remote hearings such as the hearing that the board recently had on the budget, and of course that was done before this new law was passed, um, that there does need to be, if you have a, a hearing, public hearing on a matter, there does need to be an opportunity for the public to submit, uh, comments as you did in your public hearing, um, and they need to be available from the time that the meeting is posted for individuals to be able to post them as well as, as 24 hours after the meeting. Um, so that is, that's certainly a, a new requirement. The, the other, the, the final thing is, um, that when it comes to the board's role in conducting what's called quasi-judicial hearings, it's a fancy legal word for when the board's presiding over, for example, a teacher dismissal case, um, or a, a non-renewal matter where you're conducting a hearing and you're, you're serving as hearing panels and the like. Um, again, during a declared state of emergency, if you're conducting one of those hearings, um, that you do need to be in a situation where there is, uh, that the hearing is done by consent. It's a remote hearing, it needs to be done by consent of the parties. Um, you know, the other rules would need to apply, you know, including due process and the like, but, but that, that's a, you know, a fairly, uh, significant, um, you know, point that they, that, that the legislature said there needs to be consent. So absent consent, uh, we would need to have to, uh, analyze the law and give you the best interpretation at the time on how to proceed. Obviously, if the board's in a position to have an in-person hearing, uh, consistent with social distancing and the health department, then that is certainly, would be an option, and you can certainly always do that. Uh, but, um, anyway, those are some of the points that I just wanted to raise, um, uh, just to kind of, uh, hit the high points of this aspect of the law that was signed yesterday.
Jonathan, I want to add a couple of things. So board members, I, I've taken a look at this legislation. I plan to share some of these same comments during our, uh, board, comes to the board meeting. Um, so I had a couple of things, I just wanted to kind of tag on to that, uh, Jonathan.
Sure, please.
Um, it is, I think, uh, points to note that these, uh, this legislation took effect yesterday upon the governor's signature. It does speak to the fact that, that this is how we are to conduct remote meetings during declared emergency sections. So it does speak to Jonathan just that this is, that these policies speak to remote meetings only during a declared state of an emergency, but I think most of these two are, are good policies to have in place whenever you are having remote meetings, not just to declare a state of emergency, but for the purposes of this legislation, it does specify during a declared state of emergency.
Yes, sir. Correct.
The second is Jonathan mentioned, all votes about roll call. Um, so we'll be implementing that, uh, tonight, that when a vote is taken, uh, it will be where, by roll call, so I will call each board member's name, uh, and then you will vote, cast your vote, day or night, uh, as opposed to the general, uh, call for a vote when we do that. Uh, I do want to, and some of this, you do know, but because of the chat functions and that sort of thing that are part of, uh, our, of the, the online meeting platforms, I want to remind board members that all chats, instant messages, text messages, or other written communications between members of the board regarding the transaction of public business during the remote meeting are deemed a public record. Uh, so again, as we use the chat function that, that is part of the platform, uh, and others, that is, uh, public, that is a public record, so I wanted to remind you of that. Uh, and then the last piece that I wanted to, uh, highlight, and Jonathan touched on it, uh, in terms of when it is important for you to, uh, identify yourselves, uh, there are three specific situations, uh, that the, uh, legislation calls for each member to identify him or herself, uh, that is when the roll is taking or the meeting is commenced. So at the beginning of the meeting, we would need to do a, a roll call, uh, I would assume, Jonathan, uh, so that each member identifies him or herself, uh, as being present, uh, prior to participating in any deliberation. That means during, or if you're making a motion, proposing an amendment, or raising a point of order, uh, you would need to identify yourselves.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject one thing on that, that you are correct, but that provision applies these, when a member cannot be physically seen.
When not physically seen.
When a member cannot be physically seen by the public, then each of the things that you're, um, identifying do take place. The roll call, the prior participation, prior to voting, the individual does need to announce themselves.
And then the last point is prior to vote.
Correct.
And again, this goes to, uh, when you cannot be seen. So, uh, to, to, to put it plainly, uh, it might be easy just to leave your camera on at all times, and then you won't have to identify yourself, uh, but if you are not seen, if you cannot be seen, then you will need to identify, uh, yourself during each of those three, uh, situations.
And again, I'd just like to reiterate that even before this legislation, I think the district was out in front in, uh, doing a very good job of, of putting, uh, the public on notice of these meetings, the way the public can participate in these meetings and access the meetings, um, and the like. Uh, but this does fill in a couple of additional details during a declared state of emergency, so, uh, I'm glad that I had an opportunity just to share a few points, and I appreciate it.
All right. Superintendent Moore, does that cover everything for you as well before I start with questions? Did you have anything else to add?
No, I'm ready for questions. We're ready for questions.
Okay. All right. Then Mr. Hegarty, we'll start with you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Um, Superintendent Moore, this might be wishful thinking, uh, and I know we could use a lot of wishful thinking, but some of these items, when you talked about the remote learning days, I know that when we create a calendar, we have to designate certain days ahead of time as teacher workdays and other days, but then sometimes when we have hurricanes or snow closures, we have some flexibility in order to move them around. Will we have any flexibility with these remote learning days once they're designated, or are they going to be locked in, uh, regardless of how the year progresses?
I think that's a really good question. So, so let me carry out my thinking out loud here for just a moment. If we have inclement weather and it's a scheduled remote learning day, then it, that actually would be a good thing, wouldn't it? Because it's already scheduled at the day on, and so kids can continue with what was planned for remote learning. But if we use up remote learning teacher workdays and, early on, and then we have inclement weather that goes beyond the days we have available, that could cause an issue. So I, I, and I don't know whether or not, um, because I haven't seen the template for what we have to submit with our learning plan, um, with our remote learning plan, whether or not, I don't know if we have to be as specific as which days versus what we're doing during those days. I haven't seen that yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hegarty. Ms. Kushner.
Thank you, Chair Sutton. And Superintendent Moore, I was wondering, um, the House side initially had relief from the K3 class size restrictions. Did that make it to the final bill, or are those K3 class size restrictions going into effect this fall?
It, the, it did not make it to the Senate side, it did not make it into the final, uh, language of either bill. So K3 class size implementation will continue this coming school year as it was planned to do. And so for us, that does mean, you know, of course, there's continued implementation. There's a local cost associated with it for Wake County schools, um, that we will have to figure out as well. Um, I think, you know, a lot of superintendents were really desirous of pausing it for a year, um, even if it meant that the dollars associated with it didn't come this year, uh, because it's more an issue of the space and the implementation and having more time to plan than it is about the funds even, although the funds are absolutely necessary to implement. So, but there was, it did not make it into the final version of either bill.
So, um, and I can appreciate that because the planning time and the uncertainty of some of our student enrollment, um, issues for the fall, um, coming down, I think are also just add more uncertainty to the implementation of those limit. And those restrictions are 18 students for kindergarten, 16 for first grade, and then 17 and 17 for second and third grade.
I think there's one more year beyond this year, so it may be, um, maybe one more than that.
All right. Thank you.
Maybe a K3 class size average of 19 next year. And then it'll be, it'll go to, or maybe it's 18 next year, and then it's, I can't remember. It's, um, it is.
It has been delayed, and it has been delayed. So again, um, it, I think it's, it's, um, it's continuous to be a moving target, but, um, so, and continues to have uncertainty in some ways, so.
Thank you, Ms. Kushner. Ms. Scott.
Thank you, uh, Chair Sutton. Um, I want to say thank you for this summary because I feel like it really, um, it really highlights, uh, the parts of the bill that are impacting, um, our schools. So I, I really appreciate the summary that, that, that's, uh, providing here and also the explanation. Um, I have just a few, a few quick questions. When looking at that summer learning plan, um, do we have an, any idea of how that would work for our year-round, um, calendars? I mean, I know is, uh, you know, challenging, but it's, uh, do we have any idea of what that might look like?
Um, so that, that clearly, uh, the only option that WCPS has, if our year-rounds begin on time, would be to utilize, um, to do the summer learning program during trackouts. Um, so ostensibly, uh, track four, which starts later, could start earlier with some remote learning, but all the other tracks would need to go into their first or second trackout period in order to accomplish it. Um, and as, as you recall, the summer learning program funding must be expended by December 31st, 2020. So that provides some flexibility with that there.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, and the other question I had, I, I wasn't sure because I haven't had time to look over it, but when not having the, um, the school letter grades though, did they mention any guidance for identifying, uh, growth within schools or any kind of, uh, change to that formula, or how they'll be managing that?
Well, they won't be able to calculate growth either because that comes from those standardized tests. So I think we're just, it's like, it'll be a, you know, it'll be a year with a star next to it in the archives where there won't be data on either.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I'm sure that, uh, this is going to impact things like that for years, I'm sure. Um, and then just kind of related to all of this is, is we're working, um, not so much related to what you were talking about, but are we, are we keeping track? Are we asking schools to track the data of, um, or to, to track how many students are not, uh, accessing, um, their lessons, who, who aren't being reached during remote learning? Are we asking schools to sort of take, uh, you know, like really concrete, um, capturing how many might not be able to, uh, or just aren't accessing their, their lessons for whatever reason?
I believe we are, but I'll let, um, Edward or one of his team cover that a little more fully either now or in their portion in just a few minutes.
Okay. All right. And those were all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Dr. Martin.
Thank you. Um, somewhat of a follow-up to Ms. Scott's point here, I was just curious, in these additional five days, do they say anything about required attendance? Because it's my understanding that roughly 25%-ish, uh, students are not accessing what is currently offered. So is this a situation where you're required to offer it? It, you know, it, is there a, an excused absence or not excused absence? What, what do we know about the, the accessing whatever's offered?
So that's not clear or defined at this point. I believe it's, it's, it's intended to be an extension of the face-to-face, and so student attendance would be expected, but because it's likely going to fall on a teacher workday, and teachers will still be able to take that teacher workday off while it's a remote learning day for students, there's, you know, there, it's, it's hard to tell exactly what that's going to look like, but I do believe that we will, I would not be surprised if we are asked to take attendance on those days. Uh, we've not done something like this before, so it's really hard to predict what it'll look like.
Thank you. And, and, and now I'd like to just provide a little bit of comment about this. I mean, this strikes me as another one of the examples of where the legislature is, you know, making requirements for something where they have little to no experience with. Um, I, the, the implication, yeah, by not providing funding and by, by pushing it on to teacher workdays, the implication is, I guess it may be our choice to put it on teacher workdays, but the implication is the teachers aren't working on things that they already need to do on a teacher workday. And so by putting this onto a teacher workday, then either in reality, we are expecting teachers to do additional work for no additional pay, or we're making the assumption that, you know, what you're doing wasn't worthwhile, uh, anyway. And, and what really concerns me is that, you know, the move to remote instruction does not take less time for teachers. In fact, it takes more time for teachers, and so this really doesn't recognize it's already taking more time for teachers, but we're layering on additional five days of work with absolutely no compensation. Again, that's not a Wake County decision, it's a state legislature decision, but, uh, I think that is highly inappropriate and, and needs to be called out. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, this is Jonathan. I just, I did just want to mention that the, um, legislation, the plan that we have to submit regarding those five days does indicate, and I know that, uh, your superintendents indicate we don't have the format yet for it, so there'll be more details potentially there, but it does say we have to address tracking and reporting attendance on remote instruction days, including protocols for determining attendance, the reporting system to be used, and how attendance procedures will be communicated to parents before remote instruction begins.
So even, even clearer, instructions are given, we're putting more bear, burden on to teachers with no compensation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Uh, Mr. Fletcher.
Um, in the same vein, um, what, what I'm hearing you say is teachers currently have scheduled into their employment year 10 holidays, student holidays, and then 15, is it currently 15 workdays?
Um, it's 215 days for teachers that they are, I mean, two, teachers are employed for 215 days. 177 of those are student days. There's either 10 or 11, I think, workdays on any given year depending on the year, and then the others are teacher workdays.
All right. So we're, we're, we're being asked to put together a plan that requires a teacher to use a workday, and at some point in time, teachers can choose to not show up at the building for a workday because they've earned that right with longevity. And if they choose that, then who pays, who pays for the teacher who does show up? It just sounds like it's a very poorly thought-out strategy by the legislature that has a, got a, it's got a lot of holes in it and a lot of challenges. I, I would love to see the, 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 um, communication methods and tracking done in our virtual high schools, uh, which is a schools, which is abysmal. I'm not sure, well, it's, it's just, it's, the, the virtual charter schools have a terrible problem tracking participation and reporting it accurately, and they're supposed to do it full-time. I'm not sure how we can be expected to do it for five days or one day every month. This is just extremely problematic to, to redirect the limited time we have for instruction or staff development to this activity. So I'm, I'm very concerned with what the legislature has chosen to thrust onto the community without support.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Superintendent Moore, there's a part in there that, that talks about defining and clearly communicating staff roles and expectations for remote instruction days, including teacher workdays, teacher accessibility, and non-certified staff privileges and responsibilities. The plan may include variances for those staff expectations.
Correct.
When remote instruction days are also used as teacher workdays.
Right.
I guess my question, does, does that give us an opportunity to address some of that in the, in the plan?
Yes. I think the intention is for the district to demonstrate that their plan designates the days, designates what teacher role responsibilities would be, what we're going to tell parents about how students will access. I think the, the notion that we have time to prepare for the remote learning days really, quite frankly, raises the ante on the expectations around how they are delivered and the structure and the communications to families. So that if, so that we have a plan for what happens if a teacher takes the day off. Now, I'm not sure if that is teacher by teacher or really a district plan. I think what we would have to communicate is what the district plan is, knowing that that could, I mean, I don't, I don't know that the expectation is that teachers determine ahead of time whether they're going to be in or not be in on those days, but that we have a plan for what communication looks like. And Jonathan, I see, I don't know if you had something you wanted to add?
And I would say, it still doesn't raise the concern addressed by Dr. Martin and Mr. Fletcher about the compensation piece, but, but it does give some opportunity to address some of that.
I think you covered it. I didn't have anything to add. Thanks.
Okay.
Does it, does this suggest that all of our calendars for next year need to be revisited?
Well, the traditional calendars already been, already been changed to start of August 17th, so that's the additional five days there. And what we'll have to determine is when will the five remote learning days happen, knowing they can't happen the week of August 17th. But for all of the other calendars that we have, we do need to revisit them to see when we're going to add those five days.
So everybody's apple cart's going to get adjusted?
Yes, I think the language in the legislation is clear that the expectation is that all calendars add the five days.
Goodness, goodness, goodness. Thank you.
Ms. Mahaffey.
Thank you. Superintendent Moore, thank you for highlighting a lot of the unique challenges that we have with our year-round schools and compliance and what that's going to look like. I know a lot of families are concerned about that. Is there a possibility as we work towards learning more of seeing a separate update in one of our next updates on COVID specifically for our year-round schools and what we're looking at?
I think that's a, that is perfectly good suggestion, and a big enough chunk of our community is impacted by those decisions, so yes, and, and you will see it soon.
Okay, thank you.
And I think Mr. Fletcher's question raises a good point. If you're looking at the legislation, the remote instruction plan, Mr. Fletcher, falls under the heading School Calendar for the 2021 School Year, and it is section 2.11A. The first part of that is Remote Instruction Plan. So, remote instruction part is not pulled out as a, as a separate piece, it falls under the school calendar.
Thank you.
Those information.
I just would like to comment, while the Wake County Public School System administrators and their superintendent don't complain about adding burdens and, and charge forward with, with great courage and poise, I mean, the, this plan that has to be done by July is daunting in terms of the number of steps and the number of people that need to be consulted with and all that to put that together for those five days. So it's not as simple as just amending the calendar. It's, it's fairly daunting. And to Ms. Mahaffey's point about year-round schools, I did just want to make sure that the board was aware that the legislature did add a definition of year-round schools in this legislation. And that had been a, a, an item that had come up in past sessions of the General Assembly to sort of specifically define what is and was not, what is not a year-round school. And this legislation does in fact define it. So I'm happy to elaborate if board members want, but it's in the legislation and I can pick it up at another time.
Jonathan, this is Lindsay Mahaffey. Would you be able to send us that specific language regarding what is a year-round school?
Absolutely. I will send that to you all pronto.
Thank you.
And I would, again, suggest to board members, the legislation, the link to legislation is included in your email from Mr. Bloomberg. And I would just say, it is, it is fairly comprehensive in its scope. Rather you agree or not in terms of is good public policy or not, is, is up to you, but I would say that it is comprehensive in its scope and covers a lot of ground. So it, it would be certainly worth a glance, if not a, I think Superintendent Moore said it was a 70-page read, it is certainly perhaps worth a glance if not an entire read. So I do encourage you to take a look. With that being said, that brings, if there are no other questions or concerns, that brings us to the last item on our, our work session. And if there are, I just saw something pop up here. Is that, is that another update, Superintendent Moore?
Their COVID-19 update's not over, academics is going next.
Okay, okay, all right, okay. Sorry about that. Mr. Cook and Mr. Pittman.
Yes, sir. We'd like to thank, last but certainly not least, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to share a few brief but important updates with you today. We'll try to move quickly knowing that we're a little short on time. For these final two topics, the information we'll share is, we think, reflective of our effort to balance our time and focus between both short-term and long-term planning and implementation work moving forward. Of course, with each passing day as we move closer towards the end of this, this current school year, and as is the case in normal circumstances, we begin to shift more and more of our focus on getting ready for 2021. All that said, and again, as we would always do this time of the year, we will not look past the critical importance of appropriately honoring the 11,000-plus members of the graduating class of 2020. Despite the unprecedented circumstances we're experiencing, we remain committed to finding some way to honor and recognize our graduates, even if it's very different than anything we've ever experienced before. So here to share just a few insights and ideas being considered is Senior Director of High School Programs, Mr. Brian Pittman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Sutton, Superintendent Moore, members of the board. It's my pleasure this afternoon to bring you an update on graduation. For five years, we focused as a part of our strategic planning on the goals of, of what we, what goals we have for the graduates of the class of 2020. I don't think we could have imagined that this was the update that we would be bringing you as we near their graduation ceremonies. However, the closure of school for the remainder of the year has certainly brought some things into stark reality. One of those is the reality, as Mr. Cook just said, that our commencement activities will likely not be in the same format or timing as they have been traditionally in the past. For no mistake, we are committed as a district to celebrating these seniors and their accomplishments. As such, we are exploring how to do that. As I begin to make this update, I do want to provide you with some specifics about the class of 2020. They represent not only 34 high schools in our district, but also the cumulative efforts of pre-K-12 in our entire district. As a group of seniors, they certainly have a group identity, but it's also always important to remember that this senior class also represents the story of 11,219 amazing individuals, each with their own journey to this point. Based on our original plans, our first graduations for this year would have started with ceremonies for our early colleges and modified calendar high schools from May the 20th to the 22nd. The remainder of our graduation ceremonies were to take place from June 10th through the 13th at Raleigh Convention Center, Reynolds Coliseum, and other venues. As we look at our existing plans, we do need to examine what has, what we know has changed, but also the unknown that still impacts our decision-making. Our first known change is that the venues for the May dates are no longer available to us due to external decisions about the use of the facilities for large events. Specifically, we no longer have access to Reynolds Coliseum or Mamandi Hall for the May 20th through the 22nd ceremonies. Similarly, while we do have some initial information about the state's phases of relaxing social distancing expectations and reopening the state, we do not have certainty about how quickly we will move through those phases. This creates what is likely our greatest unknown for event planning for graduations to celebrate our seniors. On Friday, May the 1st, the Department of Public Instruction provided districts with some guidance on implementing graduation ceremonies during this unique time. They specifically referenced the need for districts to follow the executive order to keep six feet apart and to have gatherings of no more than 10 at a time. As a frame of reference, our typical commencement for a comprehensive high school would have 5,000 to 6,000 people in the Raleigh Convention Center for just one ceremony. In their guidance, the state did note the following permissible options for graduations, including drive-through distribution of diplomas, a drive-in theater type of ceremony where all are present but remain in their vehicles, individual ceremonies where personal protective precautions are utilized that students are able to receive their diploma from their principal, and also virtual options. This could be, this could include recorded messages from staff and students and the calling of names typical to what we have done in commensments in the past. We have also explored dates at large venues in July and August for graduation ceremonies, but we also acknowledge that there's only so far that it is feasible to push back one of these ceremonies. As we move forward, we value the ability to have as much information as possible, but we also recognize that we need to provide some certainty to our students, families, and school teams. Certainty not only that we will celebrate these seniors, but also certainty as to how we will do that. As we look at next steps, the most critical of those next steps is gathering stakeholder feedback. We've started the process of gathering feedback from our high school principals. We are also working now to organize a group of seniors that would include our senior class presidents to get feedback on the available options. Finally, we are also working with our principals this week to discuss methods of celebrating seniors beyond the graduation ceremony itself. Many of our high schools have annual traditions such as senior awards days, where students are honored for scholarships, awards, and other recognitions. We're working through options of how still to celebrate those accomplishments during this period of school closure. Our goal is to have a final decision that we can share with families within the next week if at all possible. We honor that families and students have spent many years preparing for the accomplishment of graduating from high school. We know that we owe them enough time to prepare for that celebration of their accomplishment as well, and we'll continue to work hard to meet that commitment to them. And that concludes our update for this evening on graduation, but certainly not the conclusion of our work to support and celebrate these seniors. We certainly welcome your questions and feedback on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Mr. Cook, before I jump to questions, if you would go ahead and just run through very quickly your last couple of slides on the future academic plans, we've got about five minutes before we need to bring this to, any answer that we can get on by 5:30 for the, for me. And Mr. Hager, there is Ms. Mahaffey and Dr. Martin. I see your hands, so if we can get to these couple of slides, I'll jump.
So, sorry, I was talking and muted at the same time. So we'll pivot quickly from our current short-term planning to provide just a quick, high-level overview of some of our longer-term planning efforts that I think coincide a little bit with what Superintendent Moore was sharing as far as what we have learned just as of yesterday from the state legislature and the legislation that was passed. Obviously, as much time and as an attention that we've placed over the last month or so, really almost two months now, on what remote learning looks like in these circumstances, we recognize it's also time to be looking ahead and planning and preparing as much as possible for reopening in a very short amount of time. So we will be as prepared as possible for any and all contingencies in order to ensure that each of our 160,000-plus students has access to the learning experiences they need and they deserve. We will be ready for opening the 2021 school year or whatever timeline and in whatever form that may take. First, it is worth noting that many of the factors and considerations that we have to account for in our planning are very similar to those across the state and the country. There's multiple critical questions that we'll have to answer, things like when can schools reopen and on what calendars? We've gotten some information on that in our state just as of yesterday. What are the appropriate health and safety measures that schools and districts must adopt? Will all students even be able to attend school at the same time? Or will we need to rotate through in shifts, which would of course require the need for continued remote learning structures? What are the implications for transportation, and particularly in an environment where there may be staggered schedules or continued social distancing requirements? And so all of those things have to be answered. What will the school day look like? How will we mitigate learning loss? And then I think this has come up a couple of times, and certainly Ms. Moore referenced this, how will we assess and then effectively address the academic and social emotional impacts on our students that are almost certain to result from the extended school closure this spring? So there are many questions and factors to consider when thinking about what teaching and learning will look like once we do return to school. With those unknowns, there are a couple of things that I think that we can be pretty certain about at this point. Number one, first and foremost, and to be clear, our absolute top priority will be to protect the safety and well-being of every one of our students, staff, and family members. Obviously, all the best curriculum resources, innovative instructional practices, and cutting-edge technology in the world doesn't mean anything if we don't take care of our people and ourselves first. Secondly, remote learning, as Ms. Moore did reference, is very likely to continue in some way, though it may look a little different than what we currently have in place as we learn from our experiences this spring. The likely need for some form of continued remote learning is due to several factors, including things like the possibility of a staggered or flexible schedule, additional extended school closures in the event of future outbreaks or community spread of the virus, and even the increased need that many students may have for remediation and recovery opportunities with the new school year. So with that broader, broader context in mind, we'll just touch on a couple of key components related to process and organizational structure that will be necessary, some of the anticipated state guidance, some of which we've already received as of yesterday, and then some of the key considerations, which are critical factors that we'll need to address and prepare for for the upcoming school year. So this next slide, part of our planning work will obviously revolve around continued need to develop systems and structures that reflect both the complexity and the dynamic nature of our circumstances. I think we all recognize and understand the way that we define the who and the how of our work is just as critical as the why and the what and the when. And if you'll recall, we shared this graphic back in April to give you an idea of how we organized ourselves in a slightly different way to meet the unique demands of unprecedented challenges that we're facing. So you see here as an example of the way we could modify and are likely to continue modifying our typical organizational modifying our typical organizational structure in an effort to strike the balance between collaboration and input among multiple stakeholders across schools and departments, but also maintaining our ability to move quickly and flexibly in making the critical decisions that are necessary. So put simply, as is the case in so many other areas of our daily lives, we can't rely solely on the same traditional structures and processes that were in place prior to this pandemic. So speaking of new, one of the many leaders involved in this work behind the scenes is Ms. Michelle Woodson, who joined us as the new Senior Director of K-12 Curriculum Development in February, which, as you know, was about three weeks before COVID-19 really turned our world upside down. So she really has hit the ground running since coming on board a couple of months ago, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Woodson, who will just take a couple of quick minutes to share some additional insights on the work that is ahead of us as we prepare for the 2021 school year.
Good afternoon, Chief Sutton, Superintendent Moore, board members. My name is Michelle Woodson, and I am the Senior Director of Curriculum Development. I'm happy to be with you all this afternoon. As Mr. Cook and Superintendent Moore have shared, legislation has been passed and provides districts with some structures when considering next steps as we plan for the 2020-2021 school year. As stated from Superintendent Moore already this afternoon, items included in this guidance do include information about calendar requirements, which will guide the number of days or hours we will attend school, required plans for summer learning for students in literacy and mathematics for kindergarteners through the fourth grade, read-to-achieve requirements, which will now have students not required to attend summer reading camp, but will have them taking the end-of-year diagnostic assessment in the first 10 days of the 2020-2021 school year. Math placement data from the 1920 school year will not be used. However, assessments will be provided at the beginning of the 2020-21 school year, as Superintendent Moore referenced. The district will be required to design and deploy an integrated remote learning plan for the 2020-21 school year, and we will continue, of course, again, with the assessment of students at the fourth grade, and as Superintendent Moore indicated, probably many other assessments will occur as we're moving towards the next school year. So as we think about the key considerations, we must consider this state guidance as we move into the design phase of what school will look like for the 2020-21 school year. And we will also need to keep in mind the following key factors. First and foremost, the social-emotional needs of our students, family, and staff. Returning to school in what might be a new school environment will require special consideration for the social and emotional needs of all. It will be important to explicitly consider the student and family supports provided and consider the need to adapt these supports in order to ensure success in this new school environment. School and student schedules and the delivery of instruction will have to reflect the new environment and what will be needed for students and for families. The curriculum, instructional pedagogy, and assessment of student learning will be key considerations as we design student learning for the next school year. Designing learning opportunities aligned to standards that engage students will be critical to support students' academic, social, and emotional growth. These key factors will be considered as we think of remote learning as well as face-to-face learning in a brick-and-mortar classroom and the transition between both learning environments, as you have already mentioned this afternoon. And finally, professional learning for teachers, leaders, and support staff will be necessary as we design this entirely new school environment in the upcoming 2020-21 school year. I know we're short on time. At this time, we do have some opportunity to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Michelle, and welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Hager.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. I wanted to return to Mr. Pittman's presentation, if I could.
Yes, sir.
And again, welcome to Ms. Woodson, and we appreciate your work here. Mr. Pittman, I'm not envious of the task to which you have been assigned, and trying to come up with a plan with elements of certainty in an era of uncertainty, I understand, is immensely difficult. I want to commend you for stating as a priority that you really want to get feedback, feedback from the community, from students, and the others. I want to say that I've had a number of students reach out to me over the past two weeks, and some parents as well, all of them with very passionate thoughts about graduation, fears about what it might be, and to be honest with you, some resignation. I think many of our seniors know that, in their minds, their senior year has been politely derailed, some will say ruined already, and some of them are even worried that a cheap graduation would be worse than no graduation at all. So I just, I encourage you not to rush this, understanding that you need certainty, but you know, applaud your going out, talking to the student body presidents, collecting that student feedback. We won't be able to deliver a traditional graduation to these students, but I think we owe it to them to take into account what they'd like to see and try our best to provide something as close to that mark as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Dr. Martin.
Thank you. Just very quickly, also on the graduation question, do we plan to have diplomas available and sent out on a normal timeframe? Because the, you know, the recognition and the ceremony is much more uncertain, but I'd like to, if possible, I would like to see the diplomas are distributed commensurate with normal graduation times.
Mr. Martin, that's, I think, an important feature, and I think also along with the diplomas, that's a hugely symbolic part of our tradition. Our seniors also need their finalized transcripts to be able to move on to next opportunities as well. And we certainly are working through that process, and I think that we can work to meet that need.
Thank you. Well, and I'd just encourage that to be part of the communication so that students and parents are not left wondering, when will I get my transcript, when will I get my diploma?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Martin. Ms. Mahaffey.
Thank you, Chair Sutton. Mr. Cook and Mr. Pittman, I know two of you have high school graduation as something that is near and dear to both of your hearts, not only in your current position, but I think once principal, always a principal, and a high school principal in that graduation stage has, you know, the gravitas and the importance of that ceremony. Thank you for your work on this. I hope that as we do this process, we're able to give our schools and students the autonomy to express their specific school culture, especially in the context of this unique time, rather than it seeming like a top-down sort of edict, for lack of a better term, but just to help each school culture really thrive in this, just as we see in our graduation ceremonies at the Convention Center, but making sure that students feel like they're a part of it even more so than ever, seeing as we don't have the traditional pomp and circumstance, if you will, available. Ms. Woodson, thank you for your update. Certainly, there are many things that are up in the air, and I look forward to future updates as we learn more during this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey, for your comments and question, as well as Dr. Martin and Mr. Hager. So I think that does it for our update. And I don't see any additional hands, so I think that, Mr. Hager, did you have another question?
Sorry, no, sir. I just forgot to take my hand down.
No problem. Okay, all right. Well, that brings us to the end of our work session. So I will adjourn our work session. We'll move to our public meeting. It is 5:35, so to give everybody a chance to switch over, we will adjourn now and reconvene and start the public meeting in 10 minutes at 5:45. Thank you. We stand adjourned.